Talking about.
In her mouth, so she spells. One of my coworkers.
Probably the beer schedule because we're already on. It's great to work Friday.
My grandparents.
You do every night time.
About. If I were reading. A lot of. So we're really. You try. Right now. I know. She was like, oh, good. Yeah, I'm trying to. They don't like.
That's your dog. Starting in. It's it's. You got.
Who cares? Friends. Only.
No, well, yeah, I'm actually going to get. I actually want to get there.
But I was like, my God, I heard we gave them a heart.
They they remember. Right, right. I think someone. You're probably.
I don't know what it was. But I was like, oh, great. But I was like, no, well, it was funny. My friends. She had a son just got a doctor.
I don't want to remember. It's been so long. So the last thing. Right.
Well, that the last thought. It's only one night. But grass. He's on fire. The other one. Oh, my. Oh, yeah, there's something. I should.
God, I mean. Curtis. Second.
Knowing me.
Yes.
So then.
I think.
Not. Man. That is probably. He has. That's him. So he like. Obviously, he talks like. We own a. Uh, yeah.
It's.
Thirty bucks. Yeah, yeah.
Can I tell you? No, we might. It's almost. That's what you might be. Do you know that he learned this stuff?
Oh, I'm glad. We were there. So. I have everything there, like. Sound like. Like it's mobile. I think.
Uh, that's why the city of Austin. Two twenty five. There's the. I didn't do.
Uh, but. Yeah. And then yesterday, you left at seven AM.
Yes.
Like.
I think it was up. He's young. I am. Gets. I'm tired like. And I'm telling soon they really. I'm kind of less.
Yeah. Wait, wait. He's okay.
You don't.
All right, it is now time to begin the work study session for the Adrian City Commission meeting for September fifth, two thousand and twenty three. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath, present. Mr. Health.
President.
Mr. Robert, present. Mr. Miller.
Oh.
Mr. Schrader.
Present.
Mr. Kathleen Mary.
Present.
Mr. Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present. At this time, I will turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I have our French from citizens. Gas here, Brad Bucky and Joe Lucy, who are gonna talk to you about. Uh, their request that we open a rate case, and I think, uh, also maybe give you a little background on. Um, our relationship with citizens, uh, franchise agreement that was. Um, voted on about thirty, almost thirty years ago, be thirty years in. Twenty twenty five, which is the term of that. I am how that controls the relationship now and what that might go forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bert, Joe. You're on.
Okay, um, so Joe Lucy and the accounting manager for citizens gas.
Feel feel free to walk around and look around if it's easier for you to.
So, uh, so citizens gas is your next gas provider for Adrian, several other townships. Uh, we are called a home rule company, which means. The city of Adrian regulates our. Our rates, and when we say that, uh, when you get your bill, it's made up of a customer fee. Which would be, uh, ten dollars and fifty cents if you just have a small residential meter. There's a, um. Twenty cent fee for distribution, which helps pay for us getting the gas to your home, helps pay for all the infrastructure around. And then there's another, it's called gas by charge. That's currently, um. Eighty. It's like eighty six cents, eighty seven cents right now. So those are the three components that make up your total gas bill. Um, based on our franchise agreement is every year, there's a process. We go to the city administrator. We look at, um, first of all, we don't make or lose money on the gas. So every month that we buy the gas and we sell it, we we keep whatever difference it is into a bucket over here. A balance sheet account. And then at the end of the year or the end of the cycle, which is at the end of August. We true that up and that affects the gas price next year, either as a little adder or a little reduction to it. So and then there's a formula we do, we take a look at the future gas costs for the year, look at our projected. Uh, usage for all of our customers, all our regulated customers. And we just do a simple mathematical calculation and then adjust gas. So that happens every year around September after. Uh, we'll go and we'll visit with Greg and predecessors. Just review that and that's how that happens. Um, we have been in for a rate increase for the. Customer fee or distribution fee in thirteen and a half years. Um, there's a couple of reasons we've had some. We've had some good things that have happened where we haven't been able to. Had had a need to come in. And, uh, now we're looking at, uh, and and what the, uh. Per fee and the distribution rate that paid for our operations, the base of gas that's just passing away. And, uh, over that time, things have changed in our company. Inflation and everything has happened so that, uh, it's come to a point where we're not getting the return. That, uh, that. That we can get as a company, because when your utility and the reason why you have a commission. Uh, like a, we call it a gas commission in this case. Is that we'll have to negotiate what's a equitable return on our assets and our services. And when we went in years ago, we got eleven point two five percent. That's not the industry amount right now. So, um, and we wouldn't ask for that, or we would ask for like ten and a half percent or something like that. And then, um, we would review it with whoever is designated to be the rate commission. Commissioner for the city of Adrian. And then, um, most likely in the past. Uh, Dane Nelson is who we would work, who we worked with in the past. We haven't had, we haven't had to come forward. Since the change in administrators last couple of years. He would usually get ahold of someone from the retired MPSC person that would understand the rate making ability. And then he would review our information and we had to go back and forth and kind of negotiate what is a. Um, what's a good settlement? Um, just, uh, another thing I'll add. That last year, because of some international activities. The gas supply charge went up twenty nine percent. And, uh, we saw really high gas prices in July, August, September, October, November, December. Then they've been coming down. A little bit, well, this summer they've come down really low. So now we're looking at a thirty three percent reduction in the gas supply ring. And what we had, what we calculated now to be. What we would ask for in our new rates would give four percent increase. So basically what it means is we're look, what we're asking for is basically to put you back two years ago to what you're in a gas. Because we should. We should start here, but obviously we would have to go through the process and, you know, review the financials and that's. The other thing Greg mentioned is in nineteen ninety five, we did a vote to the public and say, you want citizens made to be your. Uh, natural gas suppliers still that pass, uh, over sixty percent. That's coming up in twenty twenty five, so nothing that we have to address right this minute, but that'd be the next thing we have to address is how do we handle. Going forward. And, um. And both. When we sit down with whoever the gas commissioner is, you know, you look at our rates for customer fee and distribution. And they are under the other utilities. Uh, in the state, so we have a very, we feel we have a very equitable product. In process. Bert, do you have anything to add?
No, I think we much covered. Got any questions? If I have about the process and anything about, uh, what would propose it?
So can you, uh, kind of talk about the timing of it? Uh, so the city commission without the point of gas commissioner, but. How quickly does the so-called gas commission need to meet in?
Yeah, so, um, so we do have a franchise agreement, it has about fourteen paragraphs in it. And what it says is that. Once. Uh, the city appoints a gas commissioner, there's about a thirty day window, you know, of course, we wouldn't. Stick to that, you know, if we need a few extra days, it'll be. But there's like a thirty day window where we would come to an agreement of what the, uh, rate should be. And if we can't reach an agreement, then we would select someone else to be a third commissioner. We would have to agree on a third party to come in. Because if the votes one to one, we'd agree on someone, they would come in and look at our, look at all the. Decisions that were made up to that point and that personally kind of be the time rate. Well, there's that, and usually, usually what would happen is we create an Excel file with with the calculation and. It's for. For utilities, it's you get a, you get a rate of return on your equity and your investment. So once you negotiate what the return should be, then you, you know, uh, you look at the interest rates and that sort of thing. And all kind of just falling low, kind of falls in together. So, uh, typically. Again, I, Dane was with the last two that I've been involved with. It's, we sit down, here's the file, we go through all the information on it. Then, um. Uh, the gas commissioner, which was Dane, and then the, uh. Uh, the MPSC representative, they would study it and they'd come back with some question. So you plan on meeting probably like an hour to two hours a week. Or three or four weeks, and usually by that time we could get through all the hurdles. And come on something. That's typically the process.
And Joe, when's the last time we did this? Because I've never, I mean, we've done Comcast franchise agreements when it comes to doing business to be like in the eight years I've been here, but.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was, uh. Two thousand nine is when we came in to ask for a increase in the. Customer fee and distribution fee. Thousand and nine that we had that. Two thousand twelve, we just came in for a. An adjustment on how the annual gas calculation was done. And then prior to that, it was two thousand five, it was before that, and two thousand three.
And and he's basically saying you want to roll us back two years ago, what?
What? No, there's no rollback.
We're not rollbacks, but go back to those rates.
Oh, yeah.
Understand.
Okay, so what it is, is, um. What I was, what I was trying to to explain is. Gas rates went up significantly last year, uh, effective November first. And it was like a twenty nine percent increase in your annual bill. And then what we're seeing now is that. If we were just to do that, that piece of it, just the annual bill. We're looking at a thirty three percent decrease because gas rates have gone down. And we use the NYMEX. The NYMEX is what we look at is what the marker is for gas in the future. But we look at the next twelve months of gas, like what's gonna be. Of course, it's not set in stone, right, but it changes, but so last year it came in a lot lower than what we had anticipated. So now we're gonna come in with thirty three percent. Decrease in the gas bill. But, uh, what we're looking at for an increase in the distribution fee and the customer fee looks to be a four percent on your annual gas. So that means that last year they went up twenty nine percent, this year they're gonna go back down twenty nine percent. So that was, I was just making kind of a reference, the pieces are different, but in total, it's still the same.
And since we haven't negotiated, because we, I I understand that, I have always knew that we negotiate the rate for the city residents, but but we just need a point of gas commission and then negotiate. With the person on citizens end.
Yeah, and that would be me and Bert.
Yeah, if they don't agree, then there's a third party hired to come in.
Yeah, okay. And then we, we already assigned a gas commissioner, which is a lawyer. I don't know, Grand Rapids, and all that person does is facilitate. For us, all that person does is facilitate the legal. Things like when we do, when the gas commission meets, you know, we meet together and then when we make an agreement, then we have to have a public meeting. So anyone in the public could come in and review our findings. So our, our gas commissioner is just for the legal process, her and I would be experts. Gotcha.
So just to clarify, so basically, though, this would just be getting us through just for a little while, because in twenty twenty five, it's gonna have to come back up to vote for the. Yes, Greg.
So there's two ways under your charter that you can approve the franchise. Put it out to a vote of people, that can be an exclusive franchise, but as Joe alluded to, it has to pass by at least sixty percent. Um. Otherwise, you can approve it by a vote of the commission, but that is, um, revocable at the.
And then, Mayor, to clarify, we wouldn't necessarily have to change our rates in two years. It just means we would be looking for another twenty five, thirty year. Um, and citizens has been providing. Not only gas, but electricity since eighteen fifty six. Pretty solid part of it.
So in ninety five, we put it out for the residents to vote on.
Yes.
And that's why we got. Twenty five, thirty years. Agreed.
Yeah, and that's, and that was, I think, uh, nineteen seventy was the one before that. So, yeah. And on a twenty five year cycle.
Exclusive means what? If it's exclusively, nobody else. No, no, no players can come to the house.
Yeah, and just because of the infrastructure, you're like, wow. Yeah, too fast.
Right. They don't know people come, they don't need.
Yes.
And I assume this is common for. Cities our size that we have exclusive.
Uh, or not as much anymore, like, for example, um, so citizens gas is owned by DT. And, you know, they have. And they deal with the Michigan Public Service Commission. And. Any, and I I can't even tell you, they're probably in twenty five, thirty cities. Township. Most, most, many townships that grow into that. Um, there is a superior, um, energy company. There are home rule companies.
Your gas, uh. They're over by Lake Michigan, southwest of, uh, Traverse City. Then there's another company, Aurora Gas, that's in northern. Oh, I'm gonna say. East of Grayling area. It's a small gas company, but they're.
It's not real common.
But if you weren't exclusive, then we would. We could potentially have other gas companies coming in wanting to.
I don't think so, that's. That's why they have franchise agreements, though, that especially for electric and gas, they they put those in place years ago so that we didn't have multiple electric, like multiple gas. Facilities that crowded up, you know. How however we got to where we're at with all communications that's beyond. They, well, they deregulated and they opened it up. If I. Kind of how we. Able to be have on some streets, three or four. Crazy.
Greg, what are your thoughts on gas commissioner?
Uh, well, as I said in the past, in the administrators.
I mean, are you?
Done, though, I can do it, I think. The idea is we like hire a consultant to help me work on, but. Um, the rate setting. Like you said, something who's previously worked for Public Service Commission. But that is something else you might want to talk tonight about. Thoughts together on how we all take into action on that. For the next meeting. You know, have points, like me or whoever to be the. Gas commissioner, we could do that, so we get all rolling with the process.
And and in the past, we would pay for the, you would pay the consultant and then we reverse. Just so that there wasn't any negative impact.
Loan is reasonable.
Well, it sounds like there's the citizens of Adrian aren't going to notice a real big increase. As we move forward, because you're buying gas. Cheaper right now.
Yeah.
Even if we, uh. Increase the rates that you're asking for, it's gonna kind of be a wash for the citizens.
But no, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a substantial decrease either way this year. It's just, there's not much difference in the annual bill. For this rate case and and the gas changing.
It's not typical for a utility who have. Been able to sustain making a profit for fourteen years, um, but due to the efficiencies and thing. Tax rates were reduced back in the. When, uh, crap was in, that caused, you know, we were able to still make a reasonable rate of return, and we didn't have to come in for a rate increase. To the point now with inflation, prices going up, that we need to come in and and adjust our rates to the, what the expenses that we're incurring. Based on business today.
Four percent increase that you quoted as a possible increase. It's essentially on the administration.
It's on the distribution.
On the distribution, but it's not on what people actually use.
Well.
Like if I use a hundred kilowatt, well, that electric, I don't know what.
Okay, so, so, uh, so for example, uh, again, I'll just, there's three pieces in the bill.
Right.
The, but the biggest piece is what you're paying for gas, and that's just the pass through.
Right.
Although we adjust it once a year, so again, we keep. Keep the under over. In a bucket, and that becomes part of your next years. And then what? What we would be discussing would be the customer fee, which is. What monthly fee that you pay for the size of your meter. And then the distribution fee and the distribution fee, there's primarily two, uh, residential has one. Charge and then commercial has another charge, commercials a little bit more than the residential. Yeah, so that's based, that's based on your use.
It is based.
That is, yes.
Oh, it's not a classic. Like the other ones you said was like.
Well, your, your customer charge, which is your meter charge, that's pretty consistent, that doesn't change. But if the other one, the distribution fee, that's based upon the amount of gas that you use.
So it is based, okay.
And. All our calculations are based on historical usage, what the average customer uses. And it's. It varies a little bit, but it's, it. Because of the weather, but it's pretty typical, pretty black.
And another thing I have found over the years is that. What an average in the time, just average of all of our residential customers. That goes down just a little bit, like, for example, it was, uh, nine hundred and forty CCF. Four years ago. Now it's ninety, nine hundred CCF, so it's been a slight decrease, is it? Some of it has to do with weather and some of it has to do with just more efficient. It's getting out.
Okay.
How do you need Bruce?
Yeah.
All right, first, any other questions for Joe, or? No, I have a good dog's plan, I have.
Very interesting, yeah, it is.
I mean, if you have thoughts on the gas commissioner, you could discuss that. Now or bring it back.
No, I think. As long as you're comfortable. And if, if this has been past practice, then I think. So, you know, if you're okay with doing it, if you think.
Yep.
Hmm.
You will. Good, well, we'll put that on the next. Okay, now we got to find you.
All right.
Any questions to come up? Feel free to use. Good, right, thanks, good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, so keeping the term of me back having the thought going. And, uh, our personal recreation director here to discuss this concept for bringing back. Here, right. Heard his part. Come on.
Hey, Greg. Uh, hey, everybody, Mayor, Commissioner. Um, what you have in front of you is a concept that. I'm gonna date myself, I remember as a kid, I was actually talking to kids with robbers. With their kids, um, so for you, those that have been Adrian forever, you remember a long time, um. There was tons of events that took place on Heritage Park, really family oriented, the Heritage Park Festival and other things like that. Um, so each week, um, within our department. We're always kind of. All kind of housekeeping, what's working, what's not working, what are we thinking long term in regards to what we're doing, but also service that we provide. Um, and as you know, the fall is is a big time for families to get out and about and do different sort of fall activities. And I'm a huge proponent of, uh, what Heritage Park has to offer. And so we started discussing amongst ourselves, including, uh, give a lot of credit to Cindy, our new office manager. Talk about what we could provide, so we started walking through the park one day, and I had this concept of. A fall park. Wasn't sure exactly what that meant, how we would do it, but, you know, pulling our team together and talking about it, uh, we came up, uh, with this idea. Of hosting a fall party. And what that means is, uh. If you think you first pull into the park. Right there, you have all our buildings right there, um, with the. Uh, cobblestone drive through there, but between the barn and the front building up front, there's a big grass, you know, right, there's a little fire pit. What we would like to do over with your approval is we're gonna push this fall party. What this tentatively looks like is we're gonna start it, what we like to do is October first. Through November fifth, and so every Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Give families, you know, we wanna, we wanna encourage people into the park, so what we're looking at is opening this up. And what it would look like would be a two hour block. Start. Um, and what that includes, one to fifty people, so school groups. Multiple families, friends, you know, social clubs, groups, schools, uh, to come on out, um. We would have one of our employees having a constant bonfire running, so people could do smores, hot dogs, anything like that. We would put picnic tables out, um, Cindy has really taken this and ran with it. We're gonna create custom fall decor in that area, so people can take photos with their families, things of that nature. Uh, but also, we're gonna have the hayride going throughout the park. And seats on the wagon, eighteen safely. So that's why we kind of, we looked at fifty people, okay, let's space this out of two hours, um, so it could be continuously going, taking groups for people want to get on it. Send the kids around, walk through the park, or just hang out by the fire, gives that option. We also are gonna have cornhole, uh, boards there as well, so really, just the whole concept of of this is getting people, one, into the park, coming together collectively. Um, again, with your, your family, your friends, your, your employer, however folks want to do this, um. And so we've already talked to people about it, got a ton of great feedback, um, I really think this is gonna take off. And what you see on there for rates, uh, this is just proposal and want to get your thoughts and input. Uh, the rental rate for a two hour minimum block would be a hundred twenty five for city residents, one seventy five for non-city residents. And fifty five, uh, an hour if people wanted to do. But additional, if they say, hey, we want a four hour block, fantastic, and really all this is doing is covering the overtime. We're, we're essentially maybe. That one twenty five rate, we were estimating maybe an eight dollar profit if we, we went that route, we're literally covering. Overtime, obviously being there on the weekends and a little bit of diesel that we estimate. Would take if we had the tractors running full time, but this is really, yes, Mayor.
And you have employees that are wanting to.
Yes, so we, so I went, kind of got this developed, went to our, our staff, um, about a week and a half ago. And they were all for it, um, and they were all excited too, because this for them is an opportunity to bring their families, um, into the park, and so. So we think this is, this is gonna be a fun and fantastic time, um. But, uh, and then this right here, the sheet is actually, we're gonna change it up a little bit, just want to give you an idea of what it would look like, but that's tentatively. What it would look like, but again, this is just an opportunity for people to get out into the parks, explore what Heritage Park has to offer. And also just have a good family friend time, uh, with their coworkers.
Yes, I missed it, though. What times were you thinking of?
Yeah, so tend to tell me what we're thinking is doing this every Friday, Saturday and Sunday, so what that would look like. Uh, Fridays, four to eight, that time block would be available. Saturdays, noon to eight. Then on Sundays, noon to six, so again, if you called and said I wanted to do this, you know, a four hour block, right, and I, you would have that time. Those time blocks available, um. But, uh. We're also very flexible, and we, we talked about and said, what if somebody wanted to, hey, I want to do this on a Wednesday night? If they gave us a call over here at City Hall, talk to Cindy. She would give me a call, I would touch base with our employees, if we have somebody that wanted to work and do it during the week, we would absolutely, um, do that for them. But we do have confirmation that our department wants to work, willing to work those Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays to do this, if residents or the folks wanted to. Do this, yes.
So like if the company wanted to do like the company outing, they could do the whole six hours, you just gotta pay for three time blocks.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
What if somebody else wants to? Do it during that same time? You, you have, I mean, the park's a big place, so Adrian Steel thinks of six hours. Has there enough space over there?
Not really, no, okay, not really, no, with, with the area that we're, we're setting up, um. Um it's really gonna be very specific, because we're gonna have mums and pumpkins and all that stuff, there's, and there is only one way. And believe it or not, we actually have a lot going on throughout the park for the rest of this fall, so really, um. We're not really set up right now to do that, uh. So it's really, it's it's gonna be on a first come, first served basis, um if you were to remove this tonight, resolution would be rates. The next meeting and then we would have this pumped out and um. Call City Hall, start making reservations with Cindy.
We did this with my children when they were at Alexander, it's often times a a class. Would get together and and do this essentially, or um I know I did it with my Girl Scout group. And had a blast, so I'm thrilled. Um the rates, you know, I hear what you're saying about the rates, I don't know, we're not making a profit.
And if you think about it, so we've looked at other areas, um if you go to different. Settings where there's the quote unquote the fall experiences, a lot of times, just coming individually, you're looking at ten to twelve dollars just to get on a hayride, so. You look at a family of five. You're talking sixty bucks plus. Um and again, this really, we're kind of pushing it, you look on there, we're really pushing this, the fifty group size, we're really trying to. And we'll see how it goes, but you know, encouraging groups of friends or again, shelter clubs or schools or. Teams or whoever businesses to boom, get fifty people out there. Um enjoy the time, again, it's the wagon setup, we're gonna have eighteen adults safely, so within an hour and a half, um. There'd be a nice thirty minute ride through the park.
Pretty good people rallying around.
I think your PTOs will jump on it, that's the, I remember, Mr. Roberts and I were PTO together and that's the only girl out there. And I I know when the Girl Scout showed that we had to pay, it was like a hundred dollars and that literally was twenty years ago, so. Cost of one twenty five in twenty years.
Like I said, we're really gonna set this up, we're gonna have that fire going, we're gonna push, hey, bring your stuff for smores. Food, we're gonna set all that up, um we're gonna have a bathroom there clean. Um trash cans, we're gonna have an employee there taking care of all that, so we're just really going, man, let's get. People into into the parks this fall and have a have a fun experience.
Thanks for bringing it back. Going back a little slow, we like it.
Yeah.
So we'll break back a rate resolution, um or a number of the rate resolution next time. Good to go.
Thank you.
Alright, now I gotta talk. So, uh five seventy seven South Main, uh you may know it's Porter House. The one remaining interest that we have to acquire for the South Main, that's Van Hall. May recall, we acquired the properties uh in quadrants on the west side of. South Main Street already. Devolution is pending for the house, um. All those, I think, yeah, those five ninety property. Uh we closed down the interest of Dan Straber in this property a couple of weeks ago. We're the fifty percent owner. Undivided half interest of uh owner of this property already. Uh but to move forward with necessary condemnation. Process, uh we need a, we have, we kind of did a resolution on this previously, but it didn't encant all the magic language that are required. Relevant statutes, we have to follow both the state and federal statutes for. Uh condemnation of this case, because the federal money actually is swell. And so John's firm prepared the the resolution that's in your packet tonight, we didn't wanna lose time. Uh by not including it on the regular meeting in general. Uh identify it during pre meeting here tonight. Questions, like I say, essentially, we already passed this. But in terms of our. This will get us. Ready to go, ready to file, we've already extended uh. Through John's firm, a good faith offered in which before the. Big things off, anything?
No.
Uh so happy to answer your question. Be doing something a little bit.
So he will get paid for this half of the house.
Absolutely, and not only will he get paid, but uh he's entitled to compensation for the location.
This this. This was a tough one for me. Was from my personal history of our home coming and taking about a hundred acres of my parents' land. To go, anytime you go to Mackinac or L E P, you go right through my farm where I grew up, right through. It's Mack, yeah, a hundred and some on one side, a hundred and some on the other side. So I have personal. Concerns about taking anyone's property. Me, my family. When it was being built in the late fifty, so like five, but I have a picture. So. It's tough. It is such a tough boat. It really is, and I understand why, you know. They have progress.
Like I say, the uh the 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 property there. That may have told you in the past was inherited by brother and sister. Uh the sister was a willing seller, and I would say an eager seller of horrendous, so we've already acquired that. Uh it may not need to be a condemnation process, we'll see what makes the most sense when you. When two parties are tenants of talent, they don't want to be. Uh with a separate cause of action, if you can bring circuit court call and petition action. Uh which. Causes the circuit court to find a way to divide the interest in the property, well, in this case. Can't physically divide it, the house sits in a location, it's been hit by a train in the past, since in a location where. Excavating an eleven foot deep trench next to it is going to destroy. And uh outbuilding has already encroached on right away, but. There's not a way to physically construct the. Not gonna have to talk on this one, uh Jay is here, small business hub grant, I like to find out something to say about you. I'll turn it over initially to Jay.
Uh good evening, I wanted to reach out to you all and share this with you and we're asking for an inclusion this afternoon, this evening. Um there's a great opportunity to small business support hub grant. Through the state of Michigan, ME DC, um with seventy five million dollars from the American Rescue Plan uh funding that's available. That money's in two pots. Um pot one is for what they're calling the the program execution, that's sixty five million dollars. Then the other pot is a ten million dollar pot, which are passed through grants that go to businesses that participate in the in the in the funding opportunity. And that's a proportional proportional money, so you get, if we ask for two million, we get about. About two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, about fifteen percent with that length of being. So what we're doing is um. We reached out initially to work with Lonaway now, um and asked them in June, I asked them in June, then again in July. Um they decided to go a different route and not include us in the in their ask, and they went with the smart zone out of uh in our spark. And the one out of Jackson. And so, we've worked with, I've worked with Murray's and Launch Lonaway, both personally and professionally and um. I encouraged Mark to to look at that and we decided to work with. Launch Lonaway, the city of the company, Adrian's company, Smart Zone, and the Greater Lonaway Change for Commerce. As well as SBDC locally, to put this ass together for funding for this program. Um it'll really be a three pronged approach that we're looking at, we're looking at. Beginning entrepreneurs, how do we teach them, very similar to the Launch Lonaway program. The second phase would be existing out business owners, so think of businesses downtown. That are surviving or struggling to survive, where they need education and marketing, online, you know, online store, whether they need HR assistance. And the third part would be business leadership, we look at. Maybe mimicking the Chambers Business Leadership Program, bringing people into that program to build business leaders in our community. We know that's something that's a great need in our community, we need to continue to build that. So in partnership with this group, um we're really looking at those opportunities and. The total asset we're looking for, it's a three year grant cycle, the total asset we're looking at is between. Two and two and a half million over those three years. Um again, one point eight to two million would be for the supporting organization and executing programming. And that programming takes different forms, it would be free to anybody that participates. And they would get anything from one on one coaching, they would get online curriculums, they would get in class. Um using like the upper area program now using the Hoffman Foundation. Um and it really has a great, you know, how to start your business thirty thousand foot view, we continue to support that. Um but then if you have an existing business, they could get a marketing person to come in, and really teach them how to market their business. Over a six week program, and this money would pay that person to come in and teach them. So think of a local marketing person that would get paid their rate, come in and work with them to develop a marketing plan. Focus on this is really making those resources available from whether it's a local, state or national. But doing it in our region, so in our area, both rural and everything else, really focusing down low. Meeting people where they are, giving them access to those broader resources. Really just asking to, you know, to support the resolution this afternoon. Happy to answer any question, Mark, if you have anything to add, Mayor.
Jay, the resolution of just uh authority to apply for the grant, correct? We have the city and is there, there's no match?
No match, no match at all. And there's actually money, there actually be money in the grant to support any. Any management of it or any support that one as well.
But just to clarify that, that two to two point five million ask is going to be throughout all of those groups total and and.
No, so the way it's designed is those groups all participate together, and so they're all supporting it, but it's really gonna be the Launch Lonaway program.
Okay.
That's getting it, but will be contribute, so. Main Street will bring businesses to the program and they'll actually, the the program will hire a director to run it. And and some support personnel, so there'll be a professional running that. And then they'll distribute the money to the third party resources to provide that mentorship and that education.
Grand grand administration would be. You would envision we'd hi- hire. There'll be reporting and things to go on.
Is the grant that? Comes around every three years?
No, this is the one time, um it's a competitive grant, and what we'd be looking to do is figure out a way to monetize the program. Thinking of developing that curriculum and then able to license it to other communities that may not have gotten the curriculum. Um also looking at some community support after the three years, th- as well.
I wonder what's gonna happen after three years.
Yeah, so the the third year of our program is really focusing on that, to to make sure it's sustaining and it has its own life.
While I am there, uh any?
Um we should talk about the uh community academy. I sent emails to uh all the people participating, um or being asked to participate and. And to you to participate, I confirmed with. Mister Galulee that as since we're not discussing. If you say we're not making decisions.
Not deliberating toward or rendering a decision on.
Yes, so uh you are all welcome to also attend any of the evenings as city commissioners. If you are going to attend, you just let me know. You know, we're we're trying to keep this. I mean, all the communities I've talked to have said, keep it, you know, small, so that there's good discussion, there's good information um going out. That not overwhelming, um but so just if you do decide to come, or would like to, please let me know. Also, I've had great feedback from the county people that we've asked, Roxanne Holloway is going to be participating in her night. With Christie, um. Commissioners and what's that? Collins, yeah, I was gonna say Terry, but I, I don't wanna call you Terry, I'm sure Collins, yeah, um. The county administrator are are both attending and very happy to be coming. Transportation coordinator, so. Had really, really good. Response and feedback, hasn't started yet, so I'm thrilled. All the members have been. Academy members have been emailed and I will do an email every week just to remind them when and where most of the. Time it will be here in city commission chambers, but there's a handful of times will be a couple of. Base water treatment plant, fire department. That's why I also kind of wanna know if you're coming or not, because. If I don't know, then I'm not gonna be able to tell you where to meet each week, remind you.
Third, September thirteen.
September thirteen, oh.
Every week thereafter, for how many weeks?
Uh ten weeks, and the last one is November, oh gosh, ten, if that's a Wednesday and that. Um I would like for all of you to come and that will be like a a celebration, there's no. There's no trainings that night, there's no. Presentation other than. Renovation, I guess, we, as other communities call it, they graduate. I shouldn't know, no, no.
Wednesday after the eleventh.
Fifteen, sorry. It's in the email that I. That would be great if you make it go. And I will, I'm planning on being at all of them except for one on October twenty fifth, where right now I'm out of town for a conference. When they pass those that aren't going to attend, but maybe being the moderator for that. You have no idea. But any questions for me to answer? But this is about my alley education is. Where I live, so. I can't wait to report back to Troy and. Salito and let him know how it goes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Mr. Elliot, this past week, we were in, excuse me, court on the court's order. With regard to Crimson Holdings, the court ordered us in after we entered our consent judgment against Crimson Holdings, finding that. Their property had been creating a nuisance and setting up guidelines in the future for their operational capabilities. Following the hearing, which their CEO flew into town. Uh and offered testimony with regard to the violations that took place. Uh roughly, you you'll recall that Judge Shagler had ordered that they operate only from seven PM. Until seven AM, various days of the week. We had found during my cross examination in May. That Crimson had violated the orders of Judge Shagler on numerous occasions. Uh they have since. During my examination again, they had admitted to violating numerous times from December. Through May, the order of the court. Quite frankly, at the conclusion of the hearing, Judge Shagler expressed her disappointment with the non compliance of her order. Suggested that it should not happen again and find Crimson Holdings uh. Uh one hundred seventy five dollars an hour for each of the one hundred thirty hours that they were in violation. Amounting to twenty two thousand uh seven hundred fifty dollars, thereabouts. I forwarded the order to the commissioners today. And that money, as uh heard the judge, shall be placed in their attorney's client trust account. And we are to develop a workforce remediation program to assist residents on the east side of the city. Who may need various tasks done. Mowing their lawn on occasion if something comes up, uh basic things. That the city can do to assist residents on the east side, this is in addition to. This is in addition to the hundred thousand dollars that Crimson has agreed to pay us by way of the consent judgment. So that is actually a fine as to Crimson. She also ordered that they pay one thousand dollars for attorney's fees relating to the hearing last week. Going forward, so we have the attention of the court. We will continue to urge residents and business owners. They do suspect there's a violation now during our normal operating hours, which is now nine PM to seven AM to contact City Hall as soon as possible. Yes, ma'am.
What if it's during those hours because I'm getting complaints from several businesses that do intake of air on like their third shift? And it's, they have people getting ill in their businesses because of the way the air is coming, but it's during the correct hours.
Then we should know about that as well.
Okay.
Look, they're gonna continue to be nuisance owners emanating from that facility until how, uh, we hope they're gonna go away.
One would also tell the scrubbers.
A new scrubber in late October, early November now. They are using various masking agents to try to neutralize the odors. State of Michigan told Mr. Elliot and I, they're not sure if the scrubber is going to work. It's never been used in this type of operation before. They have serious concerns about the building that Crimson Holdings is occupying. That is not built for this type of operation. There are too many methods of egress, so to speak, for doors, windows, walls, things of that nature for orders to escape from that building. So it suggests maybe the state, what they told us is cautiously optimistic that it's going to work. They're not convinced it's gonna work. They're continuing to, uh, keep close tabs on Crimson and they too have pledged that if there are any violations of the state's order with regard to Crimson, Crimson, that they will be fined substantial monies each and every.
And the court has retained jurisdiction after the scrubbers installed, evaluating working as.
Mr. Elliot's correct, there'll be a, a window where they'll be able to operate twenty-four, seven to allow us to allow the state of Michigan to monitor the emissions. We know that the new stack did not work, that they invested money in, but there's no doubt we have the attention of the court. She has retained jurisdiction as Mr. Elliot said. And it won't cost us much to go back into court. There are violations and try to seek enforcement of her continually.
But to continue complaining if they're getting
Absolutely.
Even, even though it is during the correct hours.
Absolutely.
Okay, cuz I know some residents in the area are concerned because it's becoming fall and they wanna get their windows open.
Yeah.
And they said they can't at night because it's so bad again.
Anytime that one smells odors, they should report it to the city, please.
Thanks.
It's very important. In fact, we're under an order to create a law against Crimson Holdings to monitor the complaints that we get and to furnish those to Crimson.
And in addition to complaints, we want to go to Eagle.
They, they could. That'd be great if they can call Eagle. It's on their website. This is one of two high priority odor issues that Eagle's currently dealing with. The other one is a formerly known as Chrysler Plant on East Jefferson, their largest North American assembly operation. And this is right up there with them. They're paying very close attention to this issue. They've been very helpful to the city of Adrian as well. Mr. Miller and his folks.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
I have one question. When, when citizens call to complain about an odor, is there specific information that they should be giving so that it's just not somebody saying, yeah, I smelled something last night. I mean, so that's good, relevant information.
That's a very, very good question. Yes, they should give their address. We're not particularly interested in their names. We don't want to rat anybody out, so to speak, although that's their address and time of day is critical. And we will look at the meteorological conditions, Crimson will, the state will, uh, to see if that's playing any part. We know that the odors have carried further throughout the city of Adrian and the neighborhoods since the installation of the higher stack, something that Mr. Elliot called everyone's attention months ago. And that has definitely come true. So the stack will be gone, a new scrubber will be installed. It's supposed to be investing more than a million dollars in that plant. Whether or not it works, it's fine, but if it doesn't work, must assured, I'll seek your approval to go back into court. They've paid twenty-two, twenty-five thousand in attorney's fees to the city already in addition to this one. And there'll be well over a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, around a hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars in additional payments to the city to benefit the residents of the east side.
Right. I haven't looked at this in a while. I know I did initially, but where can residents find the information about what's the phone number to call or what email to send it? That readily available and found on our website. I haven't complained since May.
Yeah, I mean, we created a news article back at time, which you can still access on the website. So that have, at, at that time, we were directing everybody to contact Eagle. Cause that was important, Eagle's process. Expanding the enforcement. If they're going to call us, they should call us.
Can that information be, yeah, can we put it out again? Or just put it, you know, on our main website when you go to Adrian. Eagle keeping a log as well. In case somebody calls one another.
Not, Mary, that's all. We have.
All right. At this time, we will open it up for public comment. We will begin inside the chambers first. Just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit. For the record, please state your name and address. After we are done inside the chambers, we will open it up to all Zoom participants. Mary.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. First of all, just wanted to thank the city staff and city leadership for the support on the river cleanup at Tressel Park. A few weeks ago, we had a wonderful time. Great group of students, so we got a lot of work done. Couple of things, uh, at some point, um, if we could, we'd love to expand that project. We're limited in these days at this point. If you could get a weekend in, we could get a time to do that. And we'd love to have that project get even larger in the years to come. And try to work on and improve the level of light remediation by looking at best practices that we've acquired from around the country. I wanna thank the commission for continuing to put effort into that and especially the fact that this additional funding that you, you're getting from these other sources might help to continue to put more money in the budget on that. Thank you very much for that. And lastly, light remediation, we are working hard to try to get the telegram and other buildings on Winter Street taken down. We are struggling with that, trying to get the resources of Eagle and the rest of the players lined up. We've been to the county. They have significant resources in their land bank to help on that. Uh, whether they're willing to help us or not, we're trying to get that worked out, but we just want to make the commission aware that we are continuing to work. And we need all the help we can get, get those buildings down. Thank you.
At this time, we will open it up to all Zoom participants. For the record, please state your name and address. And you have a three-minute time limit as well that you will not see on the screen, but you will hear if you go past it.
Ken, Pocar's one ten top locus. There is a new math trend that is becoming popular among the younger generation. And the crux of this new math comes down to applying illogical mental accounting to distort the perception of money and justify spending decisions based upon intuition rather than reason. Some examples include anything under five dollars doesn't count. Gift cards are free. Credit card rewards are free. You make money when you buy dinner for a group if everybody reimburses you. You also make money when you return something. If you do not spend money that day, your budget for the next day has doubled. On the surface, there may be some humor in this, but the sad part is that this same illogical mental accounting that is used by the Adrian City Commission with our tax dollars. A one-dollar land purchase and ignoring the half-million-dollar capital improvement cost that comes with it. When the city entered into an energy conservation program, spent millions of dollars on capital improvements and never took the time to verify that promised savings are actually being realized. Accounting to create a ten-year pension deficit elimination plan that is not tracked or published. The commissioners used illogical mental accounting to convert new employees into a defined benefits pension program and scratched their heads when the original debt increases because there are less people paying into the system. Commissioners use illogical mental accounting, thinking that an extra half-million-dollar payment is going to decrease the pension deficit when it increases by two million dollars each year. Illogical mental math to justify a twelve-million-dollar tunnel that will most likely be used by fifteen people a day so no one else could use the money. Illogical mental math for an ambulance service and only sharing the revenue, actual expenses are not accounted or tracked. Illogical mental math. Commissioners use illogical mental math to spend thousands of dollars to get a twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant or Main Street status. Illogical mental math is used to create a tax increment financing program for the DDA that has not produced the results that were anticipated and had to be renewed in twenty twenty. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment. May I get a motion to adjourn? All our favorites say aye. Meeting is adjourned and our regular meeting will begin at seven PM inside.
I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Help.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
At this time, we are going to do a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month and I am going to meet Lizbeth Perez-Cazadas at the front. Thank you. So I asked Lizbeth to come to translate. Since it is for Hispanic Heritage Month, I felt it should be translated into Spanish for us. And so I'm gonna let her introduce herself. She is our bilingual library assistant at the Adrian District Library. But I'm gonna let her introduce herself first and then we will begin the proclamation. And then I'm gonna do a little introduction before that proclamation on it.
Good evening. My name is Lizbeth Perez-Cazadas. I'm the bilingual library assistant at the Adrian District Library. Mayor Heath, I will be your Spanish interpreter this evening. Everything that you will be saying tonight will be interpreted. If there's anything that you will not want me to say, please don't say it. Please speak, please speak directly to your audience and in first person and not to me. You may begin.
So before we begin the proclamation, I know that we are a little ahead of Hispanic Heritage Month, which does begin on September fifteenth, but we will not have another meeting until after it has begun, which is why we are doing it at the beginning. And it will be starting September fifteenth, the proclamation will be displayed in City Hall along with the flags of both Mexico and Puerto Rico. But we are going to be delivering some copies to various Hispanic leadership groups within our community. We have several and did not feel it was fair to just give a proclamation to one group. And so all of those that are wanting a copy of it are going to receive a copy of the proclamation to proudly display, but the original will be the one at City Hall. So we will begin the proclamation. Whereas in September nineteen sixty-eight, Congress authorized Lyndon B. Johnson to proclaim Hispanic Heritage Week and whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, the observance was expanded to a month-long event which begins each year on September fifteenth, the anniversary of independence of five Latin American countries. Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. And whereas Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September sixteenth and September eighteenth respectively. And whereas Hispanic Americans are a spirited culture with a growing influence in the arts, sciences, business, and government and recognized in the Adrian commu- community as well as the state for their leadership and participation. And whereas Hispanic people have long played an important role in the history of the city of Adrian and have equally contributed to the strength of the nation as a whole. And whereas migrant farm workers are a crucial part of our local economy and their contributions to our community are recognized and valued. Whereas the Hispanic community contributions to the standard of life in the city of Adrian merit this occasion. And it is hoped that this celebration will instill unity, a sense of community pride, and togetherness in our citizens. And it is hoped that this celebration will instill unity, a sense of community pride and togetherness in our citizens. Now therefore, I, Angela Sword Heath, mayor of the city of Adrian, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three as Hispanic Heritage Month and call upon all local businesses, clubs, and community members to effectively utilize Hispanic human resources and to work in partnership with the Hispanic community for the advantage it will bring to all involved. Gracias. Thank you, Lizbeth. Gracias. And uh she is my Spanish teacher. She's been teaching me, but I can't do that. I'm not that good. So I asked her to come and do that for us. But thank you for all you do for the library. If you ever need any bilingual services. Um, she's very easy to find at the library and is a very valuable resource to our community. So thank you again.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Halt?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Consent agenda approved by unanimous vote. Moving on to our regular agenda, resolution R twenty-three dash zero thirty-one is from the Adrian D D A slash Main Street. It is a resolution to authorize application to the Small Business Hub Grant. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Support.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please. Commissioner Halt?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote. Resolution R twenty-three dash zero thirty-two is from administration. It is a resolution to institute proceedings against the owner of five-seven-seven South Main Street. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move adopt the resolution?
Support.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Halt?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote. Moving on to public comment. It is now that time and there just to re- um reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and address. We will begin inside the city chambers first. After everyone that has wished to speak for public comment has spoken, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. We will begin now.
Hello, I'm Muckin Ramos, city of Adrian resident, and I just want to let everyone know that there is a community cook-off coming up this Friday. Uh, it's being put on by A three will be at Parish Park. I look forward to seeing you there and I look forward to some support from the city. So hope to see you staying there and have a great rest of your day. Thank you.
Uh, Aaron Cheshire, um, city of Adrian resident. Since the city just uh announced the proclamation of Hispanic Heritage Month, I figured now would be a good time to provide a reminder for the public on behalf of the Latinx or an organization, Lead Adrian. Um, Lead Adrian is collaborating with the Adrian District Library to hold the training this Thursday, starting at ten A M. and ending at three P M. The title of this training is Responding to Hate-Motivated Attacks and Bias Incidences Against the Latinx Community. This training is free and will include breakfast, lunch, uh, breakfast and lunch and will be held at the library in the community room. Um, we have our flyers posted in the library uh for this event, and they have also all been emailed to uh you commissioners as well as the mayor. If you're interested, please fill out the R S V P form on the Lead Adrian uh Facebook page, and that's L L E A D. Thanks.
Uh, Ashley Cabasos Frank, city of Adrian resident. I just wanted to have another community announcement that uh Lenaway Pride is this weekend. On Saturday, downtown Adrian will be on the uh H and R block, block, South Main. Um, so it'll be in that first block. Stage opens at two. The parade starts at one. Um, we have a pet parade this year, so we're inviting the community to bring their their pets and dress them up and and be a part of the parade and the prayer session will go right up to the event and then people can go right into the event and enjoy a fun day. Um, the headliner starts at seven, so that's nice and friendly for the elder millennials like me that don't want to stay up too late. Um, and they are Batty Brooks, an artist from Detroit. We're really excited to have her come as soloist and trumpetist from Detroit coming to little Adrian. So thank you.
At this time, we will open up public comment to the Zoom participants. Just to reiterate, you will see the time on the screen and for the record, please state your name and address. Hearing no more public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
Next weekend on the sixteenth, um, so we have Pride this weekend, next week and the sixteenth and seventeenth. Don't forget it's Art Delicious Downtown. Um, so hopefully all of you can join us for that downtown wonderful festivity. Um, also just put on your calendars, the erase the stigma five K is coming back in two thousand and twenty-four. It's will be um on May nineteenth. It's a Sunday morning. I don't know that we have set the time, but I'm pretty sure it's eight thirty. Um, oh, that was weird. My voice just got echoey. Um, so uh put that on your calendars, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four for the five K downtown.
May I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned.